Good evening, we're gonna call tonight's meeting of the City Commission to order. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On the City Commission, next item on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on any matter under public input? Go ahead and come forward and state your name and address.
My name's Frank Smardo. I live on West Second Street. And I was here, thank you for listening to me. I was here last summer and with a request to put some speed bumps on West Second Street, the city and its wisdom said that they would put it to a study. I assume that was done. About three weeks later, they put up some speed limit signs, 30 miles an hour. This is a dangerous situation. I think that if we had speed bumps, we'd slow the traffic down. Every year, the kids come around, the college students, high school students are racing up and down. They use it for a drag strip. So, I feel that if we put up some like asphalt-type speed bumps, maybe two, within the 700 block, I think it would slow down that traffic. So far, as near as I can tell, there has been nothing, nothing has been done. So, I'm just here to request, maybe the city could put something like that in there to slow the traffic down, because we don't have any sidewalks that are mounted anything. We have people walking on the street all the time, hiking, taking their dogs out. And we have children darting in and out of all the driveways there.
We're out on Second Street?
700 block.
700 block.
It's a very unusually long block. And like I said, the young people use it for like a drag strip. Because it's unusually smooth.
Okay, is there, is there anyone that would like to speak on this from the city's perspective?
You want to speak?
I can.
You don't have to, Cameron, I was looking at Cameron, did you think I was looking at you?
Oh, yeah, I thought you were waiting.
It's the tri-focals, man.
You're the boss.
I was trying to talk to Cameron and say, Cameron, do you mind coming up? Sorry, damn.
We did take a look at that. We did a speed study there, there was not excessive speeds there that were done while we did that study. We did put up the speed limit signs to help remind and encourage folks to obey the speed limits there. As a matter of practice, we don't utilize the speed humps in our city just for a number of practical reasons for operations.
Okay, when you put up the speed limit signs, it was just what speed limit was already there? Because we didn't approve a speed limit change then?
Correct.
Okay.
But you did do a test on, monitor the speed of existing traffic?
Correct.
Do you have a date when that was done?
I've got that back in my office. I'm sure that was...
Well, the speed limits aren't really abused during the summer months. It's when school starts, and they're back at it again. And the speed limits signs, no one knows they're there. You can put lights on them, maybe they would see them, but they, no one pays any attention to it. So, the situation has not changed since I brought it up the first time.
Okay, what I'd recommend, based on the fact that we probably don't have all the information this evening to be able to share with you, perhaps you can follow up with Cameron. And Cameron can get you contact information. If you would like some more information about when the study occurred, we can provide that to you, and if there's any follow-up, you can work directly with Cameron on that specific issue. Is that okay?
That's the best we can do.
Frank, do you live, do you live on Second Street?
Yes, I do.
What do you think the chances are? It sounds like whatever we're gonna do in the streets, probably not gonna avoid, somebody's always driving on the street too fast. If we can get the pedestrians out of the street and get them onto a sidewalk, a lot of times, that at least alleviates that immediate threat. Is that something, in the new sales tax that we passed, we have a 50% sharing program, because it's probably too much for a citizen on their own to pay for a sidewalk in front of their property? But do you, can you speak for the property owners? Is that something you would like to consider? Does that help?
Can I speak to them?
Can you speak for them, or can you give us your thoughts on that, since you're on that street? Is that something you would consider, or should we...
Well, I already have. The, most of the residents there are concerned about other things. But I, I mean, I've talked to the children that dart in and out. And of course, the college students are transients.
Well, but you mentioned the fact that the sidewalks were, you didn't use the word nonexistent, but you used a word that was, oh, said they were limited, or something like that. I think what Darren's trying to address is if we had better sidewalks and the pedestrians would utilize them, that would more or less take care of the issue.
I agree. And some of us have improved the sidewalks so they can be used. However, the others, which represents, I don't know, 60%, are dangerous.
Are they brick, or are they concrete?
Who knows, they're so covered up.
Oh, you can't even see them?
Yeah, in most cases. The neighborhood has been trying to clear them out. In some cases, they are, in some cases, they aren't. So, the people, I guess, the hikers or walkers and all, just, you know, they don't want to have to go on the sidewalk, then on the street, and back and forth, I guess. So, yeah, we had all new sidewalks, you know, that would solve the issue. But I think it'd be a lot simpler and easier just to put a couple of speed bumps in there.
Well, but you have the issue with when we grade them for snow. That's an issue, right, Cameron? And ice, and that, and that kind of thing. It also, those speed bumps also are a noise nuisance, if you've ever lived around one. So, that's another issue with those. But I, I think that between Cameron and Darren, we'll take a look at it and revisit it and see what we can come up with.
Another thing we could do, maybe when the police are out on patrol, they might, you know, come to that area of town on occasion and try to catch some of the speeders. But I agree, I, speed bumps is not the answer that you want to hear, but I don't think that's going to happen.
But we'll look at it, right? We will definitely look at it.
I think we should have some follow-up there. Cameron, you can commit to do that, so that we can make sure and get back with you and either provide you more information, or you can share more information with us. Perhaps we can meet with some of the property owners, that might be a solution.
Well, if we did study it in July, we'll reschedule it and study it when the students are in town.
That's what I was thinking, I don't, I don't know for sure when it was, but...
We do, we'll figure it, we'll have it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Anyone else who would like to speak on any matter under public input?
I think there's, I'm looking at Tammy going, oh...
I think we've got another one. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mayor Gray, Commissioners, City of Pittsburgh employees. My name is, I actually say Mrs. Spurgeon. My name is Tom Spurgeon, and I have received, not just one, I feel like I need to turn around. Not one, not two, but quite a few calls here recently, asking if I would attend today's commission meeting and speak on behalf of John Ketterman.
They can't hear you at home if you don't speak into a mic, so, sorry.
Okay, everybody from Pittsburgh. About seven years ago, I received a call from John Ketterman, asking if I would serve as his campaign treasurer. And I said two things. The first thing is, knowing he was a Democrat, I said, "John, I'm a Republican." And he said, "No one's perfect." The second thing was, I said, "Why would you want to get into politics?" And he said back, just as quickly as he said the other, he said, "I, I like to give back." And it really kinda struck a nerve with me. And I said, "John, I'd be honored." And ever since then, whenever he has been running for election, he'd call me up and say, "Tom, would you serve as my treasurer?" I'm gonna miss those calls now. But during these years, whenever you've seen anything going on in the city of Pittsburgh, you've seen John, and you've seen his involvement. And his, the word I think I heard earlier was sincerity. And to that, I would just say, "John, on behalf of all your friends and everyone that knows you, thank you for your service." Thank you, Tom.
Tom, anyone else who would like to speak on public input?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, City Administration. My name is Craig Ritchie, and I'd like to say a few words on behalf of the community about Mr. Gray, our current mayor. I too have received several calls asking me to show up today, for which I am grateful.
Not from me, by the way.
It was not Michael. I would like to say it's an honor to be here today to address the Commission. On behalf of myself and the members of WACCO, we personally are thankful that he won't be involved in the City Commission, because we will have more time from him. But I think as a community, I feel the loss will be sincere. I've known Michael a long time. It goes back to when he was a college student at PSU. I was in private practice in town, and he showed up at my door saying he was interested in law. And then through that, he went to law school. I continued to have that involvement with him, and now he's a full-time attorney at WACCO with me. And we maintain a very busy schedule. And he walked in about seven years ago as Mr. Ketterman, and said, "I think I want to run for the Commission." And I said, "Are you crazy? I mean, you don't have time for this, between a young family, our work schedule, why do you want to do that?" And without even missing a beat, he looked at me and said, "I want to give back. I want to give back to the community that adopted me." Because if you may not know, Michael is the son of missionaries. And when he was eight, he moved to Mexico and lived in Pueblo, Mexico, for about 11 years. And so, when he moved back to the US, Pittsburgh was his destination. He came to go to school, the community, the school adopted him. He felt this was home. And so, as time went on, he wanted to give back. And so, over time, he has served as the mayor twice. On the Commission, I can tell you from working with him on a daily basis, there was never a time that he didn't take this opportunity to serve you with the utmost sincerity, with a commitment to do it the absolute best that he could. Whether you always agreed with him or not, I think you will all share our opinion that he did what he thought was best. It didn't matter Democrat, Republican, Conservative, Liberal, it didn't matter. And frankly, in this day and age that we can all look at any newspaper, at any channel, whether it's the Liberal or the Conservative, and the political maelstrom that we have going on with both sides sharing equally, it's nice and refreshing to see people in our community willing to serve for the right reason, to give back and be a servant leader. So, from those in the community, Mr. Mayor, we thank you for your service. We thank you for your commitment. We thank you for giving from your time, talent, and treasures, and it was much appreciated. The city of Pittsburgh is better because of you serving, so thank you very much.
Well, that's part of what you did while you were in office.
Where's Jay when you needed him?
Jay, he could have made it smaller font. So, I had all these great comments, and of course, they've already been said, which is, you know, it probably means more coming from the community members than me. You know, you guys hired me, so you kinda know where I stand. But I want to take just a moment, I've seen a lot of Commissioners come and go in my lifetime. The two of you actually were on the five that hired me. And as Marty stepped down and Patrick stepped down before you, you know, I made sure that they understood how much it meant to me that you hired me. But I think overall, because I've got two of you now, you guys came in together. You guys have both been two-term mayors, which is a big deal. Everybody up there knows how difficult that is to run the meetings for a year, keep the agenda, and sign all of Tammy's documents. So, it's not insignificant that those positions are positions that each of you held twice. But I think the most important thing is, when you look at this list of accomplishments, which is a partial list of accomplishments, there's been a huge difference. And I think what happened was, in April of 2011, you guys joined a group of people that literally wanted to improve Pittsburgh. And whether it's economic development, whether it's the infrastructure, whether it's the wages are up, and the people living in poverty are down, that unemployment's low, that confidence is high, that in a state that currently has a lot of, a lot of issues, and we won't get into all the reasons why the state has the issues, we seem to be a bright spot right now. And I think if you talk to just about anybody, they feel like that tomorrow is actually full of potential, and it's probably going to be even better than today is. So, I just want to recognize your commitment, the fact that you've allowed us, the staff, to go through a lot of changes, and we put a lot of things in front of you to read that you've never read. We ask you to take up a Saturday each year to spend eight hours listening to us go on and on about, you know, things that quite frankly, from year to year, they probably don't change very much. But you're always there, you're always patient. You've always picked up my phone calls, and you've always called me when you thought you needed to. I know the staffs appreciated your level of service, and I just want you to know, the reason the city's in such a good place is because of what the five people up there do. We carry out orders. You guys determined a course for the city, and you took us there. And, you know, I know you're not gonna get away, because we have lots of boards, and Michael lives right down the street from me, and my kids like seeing John too much to just never see him again. But we're gonna keep you involved, but I do want to make sure that everybody understands that what we've achieved as a community, and what we will achieve as a community, starts with you guys taking office in April of 2011 and willing to, you know, sign up year after year. So, thanks a bunch for me personally, thanks on behalf of the city staff. And I just wanted the community to understand, you know, how things work here, you know? A lot of people get a lot of credit for stuff, but I understand how government works, and I understand without five people up there, they get it and want to make the tough decisions, and, you know, raise a tax when you want to, or have to, and maybe do something else that you don't think you want to do, but you know it needs to be done. Those are big deals, those are big decisions, and that's why, that's a big job. So, thanks for doing it. I have a couple of awards here for each of you, just to commemorate your time on the Commission, and, you know, just really appreciate everything you do. And if I could get the audience to join me once more, I'd like to give you a round of applause, and then I'll hand you your awards, and we'll get on with the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Come on over here so we can get a picture.
Mr. Ketterman? I think Tammy had everything to do with this, so, I suppose, thanks. Thanks a bunch.
My pleasure.
So, this is a little atypical of the way that this is all going down tonight, since this is the first time that the elections have been switched around to make everyone confused. And typically, the outgoing and incoming people are happening in the same meeting, whereas tonight, it's now separated by two months. So, it's like, typically, the new mayor will present this to the old mayor as they're being sworn in, but since that's not gonna happen for another couple of months, we're gonna have to make do. So, as current president of the Board of the City Commission of the City of Pittsburgh, it's typical to present a gavel to the outgoing mayor in thanks for their service that they've provided in serving the community in the ways that the mayor does. And as lots of people have said so far, like, I'm the new guy, obviously, of the bunch, not just age-wise, but like, you know, the amount of time that I've spent up here. But from what I have learned in that short amount of time, Michael, I feel like you are a model for what real leadership and what true intent for service looks like. And I've appreciated all the time that I've gotten to spend with you, serving on this Commission, both as fellow Commissioner and as underling to the mayor, and have appreciated the, your service and your willingness to contribute to the city of Pittsburgh for the betterment of the city. So, on behalf of myself and the rest of the Commission and the city of Pittsburgh, I'm gonna give you this in offer for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. And I, I don't have any comments prepared. I was thinking about making some comments at the very last meeting when I got to start the meeting. But it's been a good seven years, and I appreciate everyone that's been involved in making the things happen. I would respectfully disagree with Darren and his comment of who makes things happen. It's not the five of us, and I've said that before, and I'll continue to say that. We have a lot of hard-working people at the city that do work, and they're the ones that make things happen. We just get to sit up here and pound the gavel, or vote yea or nay. So, I want to make sure that all the folks at the city understand that we five appreciate everything they do on a daily basis. And those that are in the community business, other volunteers, the volunteer and other boards, other organizations, they deserve just as much acknowledgement as the five of us ever would. So, I want to make sure that that is communicated to those that are maybe watching, or get to see this later. And I just want to credit, thank you for your comments, and I appreciate getting to know John. I've developed a great deal of respect for him. And it's kinda fitting that we get to go out at the same time, so, just wanted to say thank you.
Bet. Talk later, man.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Oh, any other comments of public input? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed?
B, I want to remove item D.
D as in dog?
Yes.
Okay. Any other items to be removed?
If there's none, I move to approve the consent, consent agenda excluding item D.
Second?
All right, it's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda with, without item D, with the exception of item D as in dog. Roll call vote.
Gray?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ketterman?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Munson?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, public?
Item D.
Oh, shoot, thank you. Item, item D. You had a...
Yeah, I just, a question here on the storage per day. What is the storage, John? Is that on vehicles that we have towed? Is that on city vehicles?
That's on any, Police Department's not here. I feel safe. I believe the sto, oh, there we go. I don't want to misspeak, but I will if I have to.
I will try and help you. Unfortunately, Tim Thompson's name is that contract, and he had to go out and help the officers. They have two injury accidents going on right now. So, I have not reviewed that, but I know a little bit about it. I can certainly try to answer any questions you have.
I was just curious, what is the storage per day that we're paying? Is that on the city vehicles? Is that on any vehicle that we have towed? Because I know it always, of course, I'm going back a few years, it was always the owner's responsibility to pay any storage fees.
It can be. They can tow those, they will hold those for a specified period of time, and then typically, they will go after the owners to recoup that. And generally speaking, if the owners do not, then they'll eventually file for title and move forward. Usually, if we're billed for that, once they get any money off the sale of those vehicles, we reimburse those funds. But generally, we're talking about mostly contract toes that we contract, that they pick up for us.
So, we do get reimbursed if it's like a vehicle responsibility, or owner responsibility?
As far as I know, yes. And I can, I can check on that to make sure. And that, that happens so few. I mean, it doesn't happen very often, but I can certainly check for you to make sure.
Okay.
When I was reading this, I just had a question. How many of these vehicles do you estimate that get towed per year? I mean, ballpark?
Under contract?
Correct.
Well, typically, if they're contract toes, they're related to some sort of a search warrant, or a drug-related incident, or say abandoned at times. It depends on the circumstances. And then, other than that, would be something related to the city. Like, if we had a city truck break down, and we had called them in to tow it. Those are generally typically our contracts.
Probably a couple of hundred.
At best.
I would think less than one a day, for sure, but...
That's close enough. I was just curious.
Yeah, I'd say not even that high. Unfortunately, Tim had all the, he ran out with...
He was here.
He ran all out with it, and he left, and he was nothing.
He got his cake and left.
Yeah, I think he did, I think he bailed on me. But I will, I will check, just to make sure on that, okay?
All right, thanks, Mandy.
No further questions, I'll move to approve item D.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved in second to approve item D of the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you guys for reminding me about that. I moved on. Public hearing, 2017 budget amendment. The city advertised for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, December 12, 2017, at 5:30 PM, in the City Commission Room located in the Law Enforcement Center, located at 201 North Line, to hear answers, objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed amended use of 2017 funds in the 2017 budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's December, and we're closing in on our, end of our fiscal year. I've got two funds that I need to have budget amendments on, because the expenditures are gonna exceed the original adopted budget. There's two reasons for that. One fund is the Special Highway Fund. If you recall, we had an agreement with KDOT to do the East Fourth from the overpass to King's Highway, and our share was gonna be more than we had in the prior year. So, we had to sit on the money and build it up, and do it in 2017. But we'd already had the 2017 budget adopted when we got notice of approval on that. So, that increased our expenditures in 2017 because of that. So, I have, I have to do a budget amendment on that. And also, the, the Special Protection Recreation Fund, that is the liquor tax. State law has it, a third of the liquor tax goes to the general fund, a third goes to the Special Alcohol Fund, and a third goes to the Special Parks Fund. And the Special Parks money goes to supplement the golf course. And the liquor tax came in a little bit more than was estimated, and so, I transferred that all over to the golf course, so it was only about $1,000 more than the original estimate. But I still have to account... to account for that on the adopted budget. So what I'm asking is for you to open it up for a public hearing on that, to hear if there's any objections. And if not, have you guys vote to approve the amendments and sign the amended budget document with the city clerk after the meeting.
Okay. Any questions or comments before I open it up? Okay. We're gonna go ahead and open this up for a public hearing on the 2017 budget amendment. Anyone here that would like to speak on that? All right, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the 2017 budget amendment. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, special presentation, active transportation advisory board annual report. John Robb, chairman of the active transportation advisory board, will present their annual report to the city commission.
I just wanted to give a brief introduction to John Robb. He's the chairman of the board, has been for this last year. ATAB, the Active Transportation Advisory Board, looks at non-motorized transportation and uses across the city, has made quite a number of recommendations, and has been rather passionate about following their mandated charter. And with that, I'd like to... John Robb, again, is chairman this year. He's an avid bicyclist and...
Commissioner Harrison?
City officials, I'm really proud of what our city's doing. One of the progressive things that has been done by our commission is to appoint a number of citizen advisory boards. I think this is critical in our democracy, and I think it has really improved the city. I'd like to ask any of our board members that are here, stand, please. We have a number of them. These people work tirelessly each week and each month, doing things in their your eyes and ears on the street. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Matt O'Malley. He's worked with us. He's the grant coordinator with Livwell Crawford County.
Thank you all for being here, yes.
And a number of city officials, Cameron and our Parks and Recs director, are just valiant warriors in the struggle for active transportation. We've done a number of things. You have a Cobb copy of our report on your minutes, one of which is a trifle brochure that we produce, and we've handed out to the international students and school students and the bike share program on the Pitt State campus. So we're doing a lot of things in education and as well as prevention. I won't read the entire report because you have it before you, and of course, we entertain any questions you might have on it. But one thing I would like to share were some comments made by a Pittsburgh resident, Ron Wumble, about the importance of what we're doing and how much I appreciate the efforts that you're doing. This was dated November 16th. More than we know, I'm sure, life turns on a few seconds, or inches. That was the case today as my grandson was walking from George Nettles to our house. The car stopped just in time, leaving Nate with a bruise on his wrist and hopefully a life lesson. There are no sidewalks, so Nate had no choice but to walk in the street. Pittsburgh is growing south and east with the new shops and businesses, more traffic. One thing that could have prevented a near miss would have been sidewalks. We do a lot of talking these days about new housing developments. I hope our city leaders have the foresight to insist that any plan for development include pedestrian safety, including sidewalks in every neighborhood. And you are. And for that, I thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, also special presentation. It'll be a presentation of a development plan. Director of Parks and Recreation, Kim Vogel, will present plans for a project to be constructed in Schlinger Park.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I began speaking with you about plans for a dog park back in May at our city commission working day. Since then, we have been planning in the planning stages and developing concepts and designs for the park. Just yesterday, I heard the results of our Parks and Recreation survey that PSU students conducted this semester, and a dog park was the number-one write-in as the most needed feature in the park system. So today, I am pleased to announce the plans for the Ronald O. Thomas Dog Park that will be located in Schlinger Park. The area will be over a half acre. It'll be on the Sixth Street side of the park. It will have perimeter fencing around the entire park. It will be complete with agility features, benches, water fountains, and then a separate area for the small and large dogs, which is one of the most needed features in a park. The project location was chosen as a result of the findings of the Mid-City Renaissance project. During that project, they included Schlinger Park in the area, and a dog park was noted as an anchor feature for families and pets to socialize. So it was brought up in the Mid-City Renaissance as a dog park being a great item and a great feature to have. So we're very pleased that it's going to be located in Schlinger Park in that area. The project was made possible by the donation from the Ronald O. Thomas Foundation. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Jim Hoskins, who is the trustee of the foundation, to say a few words about Mr. Thomas and how this project fits into the vision of his foundation.
Mayor, Commissioners, Ronald O. Thomas passed away more than 10 years ago. Upon his death, I became the trustee and created the 501(c)(3) charitable foundation to honor his wishes. Ron thought of dogs as tweens. They weren't exactly dogs, they weren't exactly children, but they were always his best friends. He made no secret about what he thought of the less fortunate, especially when it came to animals. In accordance with his philosophical and written guidance, the Ronald O. Thomas Foundation is pleased to help create what you see up here. It's a dog park for the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas. I want to specifically acknowledge Becky Gray and Kim for their efforts. Becky got me together with Kim. We put this together. And so, as a result of this, I'm gonna present the city with a check. I'll let you see what it is right now. On behalf of the Ronald O. Thomas Foundation, we'd like to acknowledge the opportunity.
Hang on to that. Don't let that get away.
It's solid. It's going straight to Jamie.
We'll see if they'll cash that at the bank.
Thanks, Kim. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ordinance number S-1050. Consider adopting ordinance number S-1050, authorizing the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series A 2017 and Series B 2017, for the purpose of the acquisition, construction, and flipping a hotel facility, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Go ahead, Jamie.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is on the La Quinta Hotel project. It's just formalizing the industrial revenue bonds. There's a bunch of legal documents that are associated with that. And what it does is it's a financing mechanism that allows them to get some good financing and allows for a tax abatement for several years on the property. We've done this for several other businesses in the past, and we're just asking for your approval. If anyone has any questions, I have Garth Herman from Gilmore and Bell here tonight. He's an attorney working on the IRB issue with Kim Bell of Gilmore and Bell.
I didn't have any questions, per se, but I did want to make sure to point this out, or even have you point this out. I've had a number of people saw this on the agenda and were under the impression that the City of Pittsburgh was going to purchase the hotel and complete all the construction and basically do it as a city project. And that's not the intent of these bonds. And I want to make sure that that comes across
Right.
in your message, and so that citizens understand that we're not getting into the hotel business.
Industrial revenue bonds are strictly a legal mechanism that assists companies with economic development. The city incurs no debt at all with these types of issues.
And like you said, we've done it for a number of other businesses.
Right, right.
I just want to make sure that some people read this and I think interpreted it that way, and that's not what's happening.
There is no risk to the taxpayers. This is something we do all the time. It's really a tool that allows us to help people develop, but the issuance, that's why Garth is here in case, you know, somebody does need a technical view. But we are not in the hotel business. We will not be getting into the hotel business. La Quinta is privately owned. It's privately financed. We were a small partner on the construction of the big sidewalk out front, and I think with sewer relocation on the property, that's the extent of the city money that was in there. And I think, yeah, but great question, and glad we can answer it in public.
And Mayor, as part of this financing mechanism, the city will actually hold title to the real estate while these bonds are being paid off. We have a lease with the owner of the property, and they pay the bonds off through the lease payments to a trustee. But it's just a technicality as far as holding the title until the bond...
That is a good point. I don't want to mislead people by saying we're not as involved as we actually are, but we're not as involved as what they interpret us to be. So I just want to make sure that that was clear. Okay?
Could you explain what happens if they default on the bond payments and stuff?
We defer to Garth on that.
That's why I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. So if the company defaults on the lease payments, the city has no obligation on the bonds. So in essence, the purchaser of the bonds only has the company to look for for the repayment of those bonds. If the company does not make those payments, the purchaser does not get repaid. They do not have any recourse on the city itself for any sort of bond repayment.
Thank you.
Kim, you said something about tax abatement. How long does that last?
That's a 10-year.
10 years, yes.
Commissioner, it meant the maximum, the way the city's investment schedule says is $7 million and above would qualify for 10 years.
And how many years did it take them to build this project?
They started in 2015.
Really?
At the very end, yes. So it's been right about two years.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the team? All right.
If there are none, I'll move to approve.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for being here.
Thanks, Garth. Thanks, Kim.
Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointment. Staff is requesting the appointment of one member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term effective January 1, 2018, and expiring on December 31, 2021.
Glenn Bliss has served on our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the last four years, and his term has ended, and he's decided not to rerun for the position on the Parks Board. But we do have, and we like to thank Glenn for all the time he's served on the board, four years is a nice long term. So we do have five candidates that have applied to be on the board, and I believe that you have those on a ballot. So just asking that we appoint one for their first four-year term.
You know how they're collecting these? I'd like to say something I should have said while Mr. Hoskins was here. I think this donation that they made to the city, for the city, is so significant to all of the parks that we have. I mean, we have a number of parks that were donated by people. And, you know, you talk about what you can do for your city. We're all gonna die. We're all gonna leave some money behind, hopefully, that won't go to the rest homes. And, you know, there's always these kind of things that the city has a real need for. And I applaud Mr. Hoskins for bringing that forward to the city and donating that for the betterment of all these people that are gonna be using it, and critters.
Do you have any more ballots?
Yeah, I have a spare.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's handy so good. Okay, would I ask that each of you would revote and only vote for either Mindy Baker or Daniel World? Okay, the seat goes to Mindy Baker.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mindy, and thanks to everybody else that put their name in.
Please, yes.
So moved?
All right, it's been moved in second to approve Mindy Baker as the individual who's filling this open spot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Airport Advisory Committee appointment. Staff is requesting the appointment of one member to the Airport Advisory Committee for an unexpired term effective immediately and expiring December 31, 2018. Go ahead, Cameron.
Due to some personal obligations, we had a current board member tender his resignation, and so what we're looking for is a replacement for him. This would have to be an airport user. We solicited the airport users for any interested parties, and these were the two that stepped forward for consideration.
Okay, Ken Harris is a top vote getter.
All right, motion to approve. It's been moved in second to approve Ken Harris as the individual fulfilling the open spot for the Airport Advisory Committee. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. City commission compensation. Consider revising Section 2-33 of the Pittsburgh City Code to allow city commissioners to be compensated for their service.
Mayor, Commissioners, at the last meeting, Commissioner Ketterman brought up the idea of compensation for the commissioners. Right now, everybody's a volunteer. I threw out a number based on some previous research, and since that time, I also submitted, and hopefully each of you received, a list of the local communities in our region and what they're currently paying their mayor and/or commissioners. So with that, we would be willing to take direction from you on how to proceed.
Any specific comments on dollar amounts or whether we should or should not do it?
Well, I guess, I can go ahead. So I guess the impression that I get is that, I mean, again, I'm the new guy, so like, you know, maybe what I have is like less informed. But the impression that I get is that Darren does a significant amount of the heavy lifting for the city. As you had said before, Michael, like, it is not the five of us that's like making magic happen, right? Like, it's this guy and the employees of the City of Pittsburgh who are doing the back-breaking work that are making Pittsburgh better, right? Like, we help enable that, but we are not in any way like the cause of that kind of thing. Looking at the other communities that were on the document that Darren had sent to us with the numbers for what those council people and commissioners get paid, again, the impression that I get is that Pittsburgh is fairly unique in, again, the makeup that we have, that in, again, the makeup that we have, that it isn't us going out and handling personnel stuff, it's not us going out and doing the day-to-day work of running the city, whereas in a lot of those other communities, most of which were smaller than Pittsburgh, that's not so much the case. That it is often the council people and commissioners that are the ones doing that actual work, in which case it makes sense, I think, for them to be compensated. But given the scope of the work in the city of Pittsburgh, given all of the stuff that Darren does, and given, I mean, the other sort of non-monetary benefits that we get, like the technology that we receive, the help that we get to do our jobs that enable us to, you know, make decisions and help improve the city, I don't have a problem being a volunteer in every other sense. I don't feel it necessary to get compensated to feel like my work is fulfilling or that I'm like, getting something out of it. That, from the two years that I've been on here, my feelings are, this work is satisfying enough in and of itself to justify the doing it. So I appreciated John bringing that up as an outgoing commissioner, because as a sitting commissioner, I would not have had the guts to be like, hey, I think that we should all get a raise. But I don't think that I would be in favor of such a measure.
I assure you, Jeremy, had I won, I would not have brought it up.
I'll go ahead and speak next. I've been on this commission for a number of years. I've served with a number of people. Our past member, who was, she was a three-time mayor, was always a backroom advocate for this. And I think the amount of dollars that we're talking about is nominal enough that I personally will still feel like a volunteer. There's a lot of things that we do in gathering this information that we have to act upon. It takes a lot of our time. And sometimes, when we're spending time doing this job, we have to hire people to do some other jobs that we would normally be able to take on ourselves. I just look at the other cities that Darren brought before us. Some of them are much smaller than us. And they have some kind of compensation, some more than what Darren has suggested last meeting, which was the $250 figure. I see other communities compensating their volunteers to a more lesser degree. And I personally, it's not going to change my tax bracket, but, and I don't think it's going to change anybody else's, but it's enough to help do what we take our time to do. And here again, I still feel like I'm a volunteer while I'm doing this.
I'll go next. Initially, the concern that I had was the additional cost to taxpayers. Even if it's Darren suggested $250, that's some major money for some people that are paying the amount. We all saw in the morning sun, and I agree with it, that taxpayers should know what they pay employees. And depending on what we do tonight, they're going to see our name added to that list, and, you know. So, you know, I thought about that for a while, and I don't want to cause any more cost to the taxpayers. So I've given it some thought on how we can fund this without any additional cost to the taxpayers. You know, every year we budget, every other year we budget raises for employees, and usually it's 2%. Every year, some employees get raises for certifications or promotions, as well they should. And also, every year, some employees get raises for basically doing the same job that they've always done or have their title changed. Now, I'm not a fan of that, and I don't agree with that, because that creates some morale problems to the employees. So I would suggest, whatever we decide, how we can pay for this and not cost the taxpayers any more money. The amount of money that we have or decide could possibly come out of the money that we use for raises for employees. So I'm talking about the ones that basically are doing the same job and just getting more money. So I think what we get paid, or should get paid, should come out of that cost, where I'll be using it, and it's no additional cost to the taxpayers. And I agree with you, Patrick. None of us signed up to get paid. We never thought we should be paid, but, you know, we do put a lot of time in. We don't do, I don't know, you know, a lot of heavy work. But I think people that put us in office wouldn't have a problem paying us a nominal amount of money.
Yeah, and I I don't think anybody up here signed up to do the job because we expected that we would eventually get paid. And I certainly think that all of us signed up to be volunteers. And I'm not trying to change that thought process, because I certainly think that is a very valuable aspect of the job, that somebody really, truly wants to give back and really, truly wants to do it, regardless of the pay, regardless of what they get out of it. And we have to continue that. But there's a lot of time and effort involved. You know, I've done this for seven years, and I've spent a lot of time doing things back and forth. Sometimes it's more than others. And I agree, the heavy lifting is certainly not done by this commission, as I said earlier. I do think, however, I think it is, and again, I'm saying this as an outgoing commissioner, so I know John and I are in a different boat than the three of you guys, and I certainly understand the sensitive nature of that conversation, because it's easy for John and I to do it on our way out. Because we're not going to get any money out of this. We would have never done this or discussed this as a sitting commissioner because of that sensitivity. But as we're on our way out, I think we acknowledge the time and effort that people put in. And I'm favorable of some payment. I don't know if $250 is the right dollar amount, but I think that a payment should be made, at least in recognition for the time and effort that city commissioners spend reviewing documents, asking people questions, going to meetings, doing things that have typically not been paid, you know. So I'm in favor of something. I think I just want to, I'd like to have some consensus. Understand that if we don't, then, you know, we'll just vote on a motion that's put forward. I kind of respect John for bringing it up as an outgoing commissioner. I know he feels strongly that this should be something that is considered payment for time and effort involved. Knowing that people, even if we set it at 50 bucks a month or $100 a month, people aren't going to run for city commission because they're going to get $50. I mean, if that's their wages on a monthly basis, that's certainly not something that they can live off of. And I would hope that it would still be volunteer enough, the payment wouldn't be material enough, that it's still, it's going to bring people the satisfaction that they're volunteering and giving back to the committee, to the community, even if they get a nominal check each month. So I'm in favor of something. I guess I would just open it up to see if there's discussion on the $250, and whether that number is the right number.
Yeah, I feel the same. I wouldn't have brought it up had I not. I don't know what the right number is, but I know there is a lot of time and effort put into this job. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that the public don't see. And there's some expense that has occurred in doing this, just traveling back and forth to the meetings and the different things that we have to go to. Now, you know, granted, if we go outside the city limits, we're reimbursed for that. But there's a lot of driving just down here in the city limits alone that, you know, that adds up over a year's time. Like Patrick, of course, I'm going out, so it doesn't matter. You know, it's not going to make any difference to me. But I would like to see some compensation for them, and it's not a tremendous amount that we're talking here. Personally, I would not have a problem with the $250. If they want something less than that, that's up to them. You know, they're the ones that are going to edit, it's not going to be Michael and I, so. Unless we make it retroactive or something.
Seven years?
Just joking.
Is that a motion, John?
You know, I would make that motion.
Do we need to decide on the figure?
Yeah.
I think he's
I wouldn't have a problem with the $250, but if you guys want something less than that, I mean, that's entirely
All right, we have a motion that's been proposed with a second for city commission compensation at $250 a month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Against?
No.
All right. Motion carries. Any non-agenda reports and requests?
Not to my knowledge, but any takers?
Nope.
All right. Next time is an executive session. Executive session is necessary to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319b1 to discuss the 2017 evaluation of the city manager.
So moved?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for us to go into executive session. Votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, we will now go into executive session.
He's a nice guy, too.
Oh, great. I get the cable? All right, so we're back from executive session, and we are going to need an additional executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319b1 to discuss the 2017 evaluation of the city manager. We're proposing a 15-minute executive session. Any motions?
So moved? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to enter a 15-minute executive session. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Against? Motion carries. All right, we are back from executive session. No votes were taken, no decisions were made while we were in executive session. Any questions? Should we adjourn?
So moved? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all votes in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.